The United States of America and to the Republic of Restless One Nation. End of this call. I agree.
Didn't see anything last thing, nothing? You're paying a motion to approve.
Second.
Next motion, no seconds. Enter discussion. Holders in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Chris Housman? Did I say it right, did it?
Okay. A lot of things in my.
Housman?
Yeah.
Okay, look, go on. Apologize.
Okay. Yes, my name is Marcia Housman. And it's just opposite. This is all the organization, my husband, Tim Housman, husband of the organization. And he would much rather be here than there because right now they are in Yellowstone. They're freezing their little feet. It's twenty seven degrees and they have snow in the chamber outside. He did already turn his letter requesting funding again for a quote. I want to take this time to thank you for your past support. I'm not sure. Because I've never been to one of the D V S's. That's his job when he comes to me. But I wouldn't be able to understand the impact this has. This is not just a fun trip. This is not just something that we do to get an opportunity to have a vacation that's not had one before. My mother always said, now's prevention's worth a pound of cure. And I have believed that all my life. I have lived my life so. And I found it to be true in my thirty nine years of teaching. That you can prevent a lot of things and it's always good to have things on the far side of kids getting into trouble and maybe blundering their lives. It's also good if you can send a different direction. And so this year, he had put together an impact report. And I wondered if I could have made it. It's gonna probably take me about six minutes to read it. Can I have that much time?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So we just want you to see, I just want to tie this bridge up. We just want us, want me to see what it is that we are seeing as a result. So this is from him, so the verdict isn't gonna sound like it's from me. It's ten. In text format, in two thousand fourteen, U T Yellowstone and Peter County has positively impacted the lives of approximately a hundred forty students in Peter County. While this positive impact has varied from student to student, there are many noteworthy examples. Just a review of it. One recipient of the U T Yellowstone trip in two thousand fourteen, president of our center trips, was greatly impacted by seeing the greater world and what possibilities there were for his future. He returned to school that next fall with a totally different mindset. The next two years, he worked hard, brought his grades up, soon decided he'd go to college to be a history teacher. U T Yellowstone's current president, which is Tim Housman, got a call from this young man in two thousand twenty one. He stated that the trip had been a turning point in his life. He was now, although living in Greensburg, he was a history teacher in Jennings County and was married to an English teacher there and wanted to give back to the program by volunteering as a chaperone. Since he was only twenty four and our insurance does not cover adults until they are twenty five, Tim told him to call back the next year. In two thousand twenty two, both he and his wife were vetted and approved as chaperones. And in two thousand twenty three, the couple went again as leaders. Both were excellent with the students and his story being shared around the campfire both years was very impactful to the students on those two trips. They've taken a year off this year in two thousand twenty four to have a personal vacation, but they both plan to continue volunteering with the program in the future. There's another young lady who was the recipient of the U T Yellowstone trip in two thousand fifteen, who became an early childhood education specialist. She is returning this year to be a chaperone for one of our trips, citing her desire to contribute to the program that had been so meaningful to her. I'm gonna pass around the picture right now, if you opposed to take a look at it as I talk about this young lady. In two thousand twenty two, there was a young lady, like a recipient that summer of the trip. Unfortunately, the week of her departure, her aunt, with whom she had lived for quite some time in Florida, was hit and killed on a motorcycle. She had to forfeit her trip. So the following year, she asked the guidance counselor if she thought U T Yellowstone would accept her application the second time. It actually already told the counselor that this would be acceptable as she asked. So the young lady applied again, was able to go on her first trip last summer. After that first day of travel and working through that bit of homesickness and trepidation that many of her experienced, this young lady began to blossom. She was interested in everything and with her penchant for art and her artistic eye, she noticed and pointed out many details in nature that others missed or simply skimmed over in their rush to move on to the next thing. She was absorbed with and attentive to every little detail. After requesting some more instruction for using the camera that U T Yellowstone wanted each student, she could often be seen taking incredible photos of not just a huge grand vistas and amazing formations that all the others were capturing in their photos, but also the tiniest little floor and barn that perhaps has seen the eye of many others. She saw beauty and life in everything, even with it being as cold as it was for a few of the days in the park, her artsy nature would compel her to find a few tiny wildflowers to brighten up the picnic lunch tables and so forth. By the middle of the camping stay in Yellowstone, she was throwing herself into life in the outdoors with total enjoyment, breakfast abandoned, as can be seen by those pictures that I just passed around with her doing handstands and hand springs on the shore of Duck Lake in West Elm. This young lady is a very talented artist in many areas, including drawing, painting, ceramics, artistic arrangements, various decorative creations. One evening around the campfire, she asked me then for a piece of paper out of his notebook that I carried with me. I gave, I gave her one, not picking anything up. She got back down to the fire for just a few minutes with that paper, then returned and handed it back to me. She said, this is for you. I just wanted to thank you for making this possible for me. It is the best thing that's ever happened to me in my life. That. At the bottom of that paper that I just passed out was. Then she simply turned to the campfire, looking at that paper in the dim firelight, I could see she'd sketched a picture of campsite and loaded this and signed it for me. Needless to say, I was rather overcome with emotions of judgment. My wife and I personally made a shutterfly book of each trip for each of the students at our own expense. We don't tell the students that they're getting this gift, but we give it to them as a surprise at the pizza party reunion that we host for each group to get together again a couple of months after the trip. In two thousand twenty three, I completed this young lady's sketch in the shutterfly book for her trip. Always keep the original as a small yet treasured reminder that what we do does make a difference. Prior to going on the trip, this young lady had struggled with several things in her life. Those struggles were definitely reflected in his grades. We learned that this year, there was quite a change in her at school. Another student informed us the young lady had straight A's on her report card for the first time in her entire life. We have seen, since seen her name on the honor roll in the newspaper post semesters. I know this young lady will forever be grateful for this life-changing event, and we at U T Yellowstone are grateful for the opportunity to provide this service to her and others. We are hopeful that this experience will be the catalyst that will change the trajectory of her life. As a footnote, she also encouraged the student to apply this year when she found out that that student was hesitant to apply when given the opportunity. The student from two thousand twenty three wrote a note on the two thousand twenty four students applicant saying, Jazzy was here, so we can see it. That's what we called it, Jazzy. We had one student that became very interested in photography while on the U T Yellowstone trip, and he eventually found employment at a photography shop in a nearby county. Another trip recipient is currently working part-time with a community foundation, and another student, quote, found her voice. After the trip, she lived with her grandmother and she was incredibly shy and rarely spoke. When the hype of bunsen peak became very difficult for her and another student, they decided they were done. When I, I was just in, reached and seated along the path, I suggested that we just try to reach that hall along, kind of hear the band, then take a rest, then look for another spot to aim for, take another rest until we can eventually reach peak. I explained that if they were to take this challenge to succeed, someday there would be something seemingly insurmountable in their lives and they could be encouraged by looking back and remembering how they accomplished this seemingly impossible task, little by little. One girl was willing, but the other one stayed behind with a notebook though. Little by little, she and I conquered that challenge. By the time we reached the top, we could only stay about ten minutes due to an incoming storm that I could see in the distance. And by the time we reached the bottom and the safety of the van, we had been hit with soap and sleep, then rain, and we were soaking wet. But something about that experience brought about a change in her for the rest of the trip. She talked about the experience a great deal and then began to open up in conversation with everyone about how this was for me. When we returned home, her grandmother asked what in the world we had done to her. She told us, she speaks. The next fall, when she found out that we were presenting to some local organizations for fundraising purposes, she told her guidance counselor that she would like to go along, share her shutterfly book and tell the organization what the trip had done for her, what a change. Many of the students have also learned the value of community. They've learned that there are others out there who care and that they, in turn, can care about others. They've learned to be appreciative of the generosity of this community and have seen that they too can one day be a contributor to the betterment of others. There was actually one week of the two thousand nineteen trips, and it's one that lasted five. They still celebrate birthdays together when possible, and they have an annual summer picnic at the Westport Park. There are a lot more stories that could be shared, but these are just a few to give you an idea of the impact that the dollars you have earned is having on the youth indicator count. Thank you very much for your time for listening and maybe next year, ten.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll take a look at it in August.
Yes.
Budget. Okay. Lindy Mark. Animal control.
I had to go before the commissioner that was concerned about animal control coverage. And the commissioner suggested that we hire a part-time animal officer.
Okay. All ours, we're.
It would be a part-time, uh, what was part-time, seventeen hours.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen hours.
Sixteen. But what, what are we talking about? How many hours? What do we look at?
One, four to midnight.
Three days a week.
Five days.
It's not part-time.
That's.
How do you? It's, is it in the budget?
It's hitting this. It is hit in this, so, you know, you might go a month without care and then, then it might get goofed.
Are there more surrenders in their own pickups?
Yeah, well, we're seeing a lot of jumping right now.
What's your board say?
They said, I haven't had a time hiring one like us. I'm gonna give an effort. I'm gonna be honest, I mean.
I think we tried this a year ago, didn't we? Or some.
Well, I got a running jobs for a year and a half.
They're gonna want that job. I mean, that's.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly.
You know, you have it in your budget now.
And, and the thing is, if we were gonna go and ask for anything, and that would be down the line, would be like a part-time kennel technique that come in because we are just, you walked through, you saw it for stuff.
I was there. Ashley, what's, you're on the board, what's?
I mean, I, we don't see how we can do it right now. I don't think we're gonna get a good applicant to operationalize it from four to midnight, five days a week.
Are you paying them the whole time or are we paying them when you go out and call?
Who would, who would want to sign up for that?
You know, I'm just asking the question.
I think that we also need to, Mindy and I have been working to better define what an on-call emergency truly is if they're called out. And then Mindy was looking at numbers to see what calls were truly in urgency by that definition and how many of them were coming in after hours like that. And we don't have that yet, but I don't know that those numbers will support the cost and the effort it would take to make a second case so happen.
So what got this started? I mean, it was a holiday and some, there was a dog and he picked it up.
It was election, it was election day. So, I mean, it was our holiday and at eight o'clock, got a phone call. And I didn't take it, I mean. And so apparently someone called Jeremy Katabo complaining about it and I got a phone call and he questioned me. And when I pulled the report, it was a running bath launch.
You don't do running at large.
They can't catch it, how can we? I mean, that's how I, I mean.
If it's not in your budget, I don't see, I don't think. It's not right now. I don't think.
Plenty of time we can look at it then, but right now, third to a part-time money available.
So, no, it's not a running basket, it's gonna be a person.
You would.
So it's our recommendation to her to put it in her two thousand twenty five budget as a potential line item and then we cross it out, or do you want her to leave it out?
They think they're gonna need it, they're gonna have to put it in their budget.
So putting in two thousand twenty five, we take a look at it. As long as you think it'll, you know, you can, you can find somebody to work it, I mean, that's.
You're not assigned a port and not, no one in our class. And when else, if we were to pay them hourly for all of those hours, what are they going to be doing in the time that they're not?
They have to be set up where you just pay, you get called in, you get drawn off. They don't get paid for the midnight every night just to do a cocktail.
That's what you're gonna pay by the call or?
That would be, you got the board to set that up, how they think about this.
But this is about. I mean, it's.
I hate people who's always knocking on animal control and Michelle Perfect.
So if she's gonna determine numbers for just on-call, should she use the rates that the coroner's office uses as a starting point, do you think?
I'm sorry?
Use the coroner's office setup for on-call?
Order, that's what they do when you get called out, you on-call, and if you're knocked off, that's.
I'll take it, they get paid five feet, okay?
Dollars or something per hour that they're on-call and then a flat fee for loan.
Is that how it works? Take a look at it.
On-call, we have to be available. Pay just because.
I'd say just back it into twenty five, see what you.
Work it up.
If I do, take a look, okay? You can explain it in the budget. Hey, Heather with Purple Lines.
Good morning, I'm going to journal, I'm the finance director with Red Bull. And I'm actually here to play for outreach coordinators who use these like words that are shorter than I do. So this might be helping me. We are actually here to request for support for our services, um, county specific, why, I guess, attack matters. Our direct services for the elderly and disabled community total roughly seven hundred and one thousand dollars to the force over the force in two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty four. We provided sixty eight hundred home builder bills and twenty five hundred hot meals directly to the homes. And we have for a foster grandparent program, which is a tutoring program in the school system, that you have for currently non-taxable stipends that total up to ten thousand dollars. Because we request funding for match dollars to federal requirement for grants, so we ask that county continue to support us as we think for the next year, but we have received support over the past. This point. We currently have three Decatur County residents to pay in taxes who live in this county and who work in this county, so they have a very close relationship to the clients that they're dealing with. And we continue to ask for support so that we can enable these clients to stay in.
Seven hundred and fifty one thousand methods for the data, tell me.
Yes, it's county specific, yeah.
How much you asking?
I'm asking for fifteen thousand.
Okay, do I have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. We'll take a look at it in August.
Thank you.
Kelly? You know, I want to hear everybody.
Thank you, thank you. We probably won't go out of number after you directions, now safe ground and shelter. We have just a resource center and a state hospital and domestic violence victims that take care of mommy. We do offer our services to surrounding counties as well, but we do focus all of our efforts on the community. Some requesting ten thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty five budget primarily to cover our mortgage and any emergency needs. I have spent the last three years right sizing all of our agreements, so as far as salaries and utilities and whatnot, we have all of that covered. Our short haul is, if I can't turn in any of our mortgage, but that's the primary act. In two thousand twenty three, we service two hundred and twenty eight Decatur County residents and their quarter and fifteen children. And our growth rate for this year is a little bit over twenty percent so far, so the eight is.
What we did in the past?
Uh, last, last year, I'm fault, I did not request the last year. Fish or whatnot. Previous that was, we received seventy five hundred.
That was usually.
Too much.
He said the part.
Oh, yeah, comes out of the river.
Yeah, yeah.
What else have any questions? That's what I got in August. We're out of river, but. Thank you. Okay, anybody else got anything before we move on to national transfers and? Yep, yeah, dude.
No, I was just, sorry. Lots, we worked on two months, it's finally got all the numbers checked. This normally would be something we would talk about in August due to our timing of our lease cycles and our sport mix. I'm just wanting to talk to you guys before I enter into lease the, the, so, my budget for the next four years. Buying a car for the horse, that's just. I, if you remember last year, we went through the budget cycle, anticipated our budget increasing the tax the fourth year of all the equipment, so it was the first year of adding the support that was built into the lease, like in your initial, I mean. I literally threw out a number just based on previous votes, yes, if you're not far out, budget higher for the, almost a year later, what is to buy a hundred thousand dollar style wire. That hundred thousand dollar cover us for this year, but what happened at the end of two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four, and this is not a problem just for us to hear, apparently it's a global issue. The company called the Empire that does all of our server virtualization, how we handle things, that was acquired by a global conglomerate. And a lot of the setting vary between three hundred and five hundred percent increase in the software service. So we, we're working with a third party to help do some consulting. Issue we have right now is not really a hundred entity that I'm comfortable switching to, because the number two to this company is like an eighteen person company that it's gonna probably grow for the next few years as people leave, pay a mortgage to this. I'm just not comfortable with. Um I'm just not comfortable with the emergency services thing, so we have our network to make that jump, and be one of the first people. Uh we did a little retooling, and I think maybe even the weeds on the technical aspect of it, but it is more cost-effective for lease and support payments for us to actually replace the six servers. Which now is here for, try to do five years, but if I replace those servers to respect this tool more to meet this licensing requirement. Our licensing requirement is a third of the cost. The excess savings and the money allows me to go purchase all new equipment now, instead of waiting, so in the next year, into twenty twenty-six, which is what our initial plan was. So crunching all the numbers, looking at lease payments, which of course we were at roughly one point nine, two point four percent. Right, it's not five today's dollars. Doing math, putting it all together, and they were, that's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that I have in payments contracts and lease payments. The attempt was only just kind of a long, three years, we have lease payments. Next three years, we probably have additional support, and go through that cycle. For me to cover and everything, do I need to take that through walking total? So it is a fifty thousand dollar per year increase for a budget. And just for clarity sake, this is the shared budget, so that's fifty thousand, you're in twenty-five thousand on both sides. Um with the, all of the other budgets, my idea was actually due to the city a week ago, I'm gonna have a receipt together, because I need to get, get through today. Hopeful budget increase with the salary per bike, two other bike companies, system home services, maybe, or showing it right now, about sixty thousand. Oh, fifty thousand of that is just as big as that support, yeah, six hundred dollars, it's just.
That's your salary, but total budget, yeah.
Yeah, so what, we're looking at a total increase to the city, into the county of twenty-nine thousand. I can't see something, August conversation, but we actually run out of support in two weeks, quoting its greatest period, to take this decision.
So you're, so I understand that it is replacing the server.
That's replacing the server, yes, so I dropped seventy thousand dollars a year in support for the old equipment. Let's start this hundred and sixty thousand dollar year lease, but my software that go on those servers decreases by whatever. So it's, it's just the way the server, or back in the day, you bought two processors, and each had a bunch of cores. Now VMware does it based on the number of cores, so it's cheaper for us to put one processor for cores. I know that's, that sounds crazy, clearly physically how it is on chip, that's, to be able to mob them or chip hackers, so here's.
So, and then how long is the new servers? We look, are another five years to do it again?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, and that's, that's what we tried to stretch the budget, I think it was a shock to everyone last year, because this is people. Come along off council, or it's head, like we discussed, we're trying to get a budgeted account, and you keep this across the map, or. Pay for renewal, at least it's a compromise, I can just kind of hold forward, and you're here, we could make it work another year. But next, almost the same as first year. To keep things as they are, but often for years, I create a license. So this, I think when I did the math, it was like a hundred and ninety-two thousand versus a hundred and ninety-six thousand. So it was like five thousand more per year on paper, except we're getting, we're in your equipment, yeah. So it, it makes a lot of sense, I just, obviously, I'm comfortable saying, yeah, let's sign this lease, and kind of you guys say, oh, sorry, you know, I wouldn't talk to you. Again, I apologize, I, but with the sex of what the company is, one of the, I followed dinner, I, fire license numbers. It's been a rough, rough situation, a company that took over, froze all financials, and we're not doing quotes from January until the end of April. So we've been dissing.
Do you think there's going to be companies come out of this thing that?
There are, there are two or three that have done it for a long time, but they're really the more targeted. VMware was kind of like the, if you had one server two, all the way up to huge institutions that don't want to do things in the cloud, or if Amazon or Microsoft. Of course, one hundred companies use VMware. Broadcom, who purchased, really decided that we don't want any of what's all these small companies, these small big guys. The problem is that a lot of vacuum, the people that able to want to, uh this is like, I talked to RBSK, the project that they use for a lot of their clients, and they forget, turn uh server to. Great, maybe, but I look for competitors, they give people globally to do everything, um just. Right now, they're, they're next apart, they have tech direction in Indianapolis, they're here in six, in four hours, we might have that.
Right.
That's where my, it's, I don't officially technically what to do as far as.
Hold your head up, that's me. Well, I'm just like terrible.
We were able to increase, or I do much like trying to say, underlining, so, oh my gosh. But I did all the math to try to, just got as much as I could, just to show this isn't just an ask for a warrant, this is for what we need to do. Things, is that fifty thousand, or just us, or is that split with the city, about we split, so that's twenty-five, yeah. It might say it's the total budget cost right now, it's right, six thousand dollars a thirty each. Yeah, uh and the way it works with the lease payments is, we're trying to set up the semi-annually, so that we make a pay, you know, this year with a hundred and seventy we have budgeted. And this, this also adding additional storage, that's what that lease line, I'm sort of saying additional equipment. So we pulling that forward a year, is why we're offset.
Is this a service that IOT is looking at owning globally as government wants it all?
No, a lot of what IOT is doing right now is basically offering their cloud hosting resources. We actually reached out to them back a year ago, we're talking about Microsoft subscription. And office trees, a lot of what we're doing now is getting people onto the dot I, dot gov. You know, for all our towns that don't have an infrastructure, or don't have a department. IOT does help us quite a bit, um one of the products that we purchased with our funds at the county, we did a reader project, which is up this year. A year later, I see part of that company provides it to all municipalities that they're charged. So we were actually able to add, the city's grace were gone, a year later, no cost. Now the contract is up, we're just moving on to states, no cost, it's like sixteen thousand dollars. So, you know, we are realizing as much as we can, the state, a lot of it is just, or they do a lot of little things, helps smaller municipalities, a lot of it doesn't pertain to us, and then obviously, big things like this.
I think they're trying to grow services, so you might reach out to your contacts, just stay.
Yeah, we, we get emails usually once a month, and ironically, the old software company that dispatch used to use for the self-serve, basically what we're talking about here. Uh the technical guy that I know that there is a consultant, actually, took that role to say, so I get emails, and I call it, we work to get the words. So, yes, we, we definitely will.
Okay, I'm going to, I think, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Additional, I didn't see any additional. Transfers, everybody get a copy of transfers? Very many.
What is the last?
Finished it on the back, he just wanted to refer basically cash from.
Probably three, yeah.
Like motion with.
Bill Mike's motion approved transfer. How many seconds, the other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. We have ordinance. How do you want to explain this? Can you explain it? If you want me to try.
I'll jump in.
Well, we passed some ordinances last month on salaries. There's an ordinance from two thousand four dash eight. Connor Dix, my basement, right, Connor Dix wanted some of the ordinance. So we need to repeal ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash eight, which the new hires were hired. They were hired in four percent less than the base pay. Like Greg Christie, okay, then you moved up to two percent. So this ordinance here repeals that ordinance, so that when they're hired in, they're hired in the base pay. Instead of the four percent less is what we're working on, is what it does. Did I explain it correctly?
You did.
Thank you. So, once we repeal that, anywhere, we're still on that. But we'll have to figure out what date we want to do that, I mean, that's what, yeah. We'll have to, well, good, July, or?
There's under ten, there's ten.
I mean, I mean, was, how many moves up? I didn't bring a list, but about seven, I think, did? That's seven.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we've got all those people identified, to look at the structure, where do they fall, and the timing, and. To do to get.
About seven, right?
So, if we do that, the departments that have those people, they budgeted to be able to put them right to base pay, now that's the issue.
Probably not.
There will probably be additional in the.
Okay.
Correct, or transfers, make it up. Um yes.
Um you're also, there's going to be a few departments too, that um the employees that are not exempt to exempt, and we pay back their time after what goes on.
Okay.
Because that, that matters.
But we have to do it, so.
Yeah, well, we, Connor Dix won their pass, so.
I don't know that it really matters, I'm not doing it, is it?
It's. And that gives guidance, because if we waited until later in the year, or January first, and all this was discussed, and what would be better? If we waited, any new hires, because this has been set away, when new hires would be making more. What's.
Are we going to just do it July first? While I make motion, we.
We passed the.
Pass the ordinance. We have to do a second one to.
Yeah, we're gonna have a second one, yeah. Okay, we're gonna go motion, pass the ordinance.
So that's presented.
Actually, seconds, okay, we've been doing roll call, ordinance, Jan.
Kenny?
Yeah, A, or A, yes?
Back, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes. Now we need to discuss, when's going to take effect? When's the next pay cycle? If we just, if we do it July, the, we did it the first, if we did it the first pay cycle in July, does that make sense?
Yeah, that Friday after July.
For your two weeks.
It's the fifth. So, so right, we know that, so it's July, it's the.
But that's for a week.
But that's, right, right, so July fifth pay is for the last two weeks and, well, last week in June. So what we want to do in half of July fifth pay.
Yeah. I suggest, that way it's rotated, and it's. You know, the two-week rotation, okay? Make a motion on that.
So we're making motion for the start on July the fifth, fifth, yeah, okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Bill, seconds, and discussion. All those in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else have any name for us? Yes, Ben.
This is Kathy from Purdue. Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself, my name's Kathy, and I just started with the Purdue College, not here in town. Also work out of the Russian Shelby County Purdue's and colleges. I'm not employee of the county, uh I receive funding through the SNAP, and it's a federal program, and then I'm a Purdue University employee. But I do work here out of the county office, but I just want to introduce myself, this position is not new, but it's new to the county. The last person was in Shelby County mostly, so I don't think they really work a lot at Decatur County. The goal of the program is to increase nutrition education, food access, and exercise opportunities for all people in the county. So some of that is through direct nutrition education to SNAP eligible audiences, and another part of that is working on the policies, environmental changes that can make those things more accessible. So looking at food security, food pantry access, does anything related to food security, food safety, or this one?
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, as far as that page council on entry level driver trainer. This group has got all three of the new hires, our hires is Don C D L. They've been through the theory, they have been through the range, and they are doing behind the wheel, but they all end up throwing in for permit. Next thing that will be left them is to quickly get their license, okay? As of this point, and through that, has been no cost of capital. So just wanted to get an update on that, it's our three. So I've got one more, sorry, buddy.
Do you pay for their testing?
Yeah.
They do that.
But I heard they were required to go to the license branch, get their, pass their the information they need to pass, which would be the air braking doors left hand, or work for that. Responsible for paying for their CDL physical for very first one. And they're responsible for paying for their test and testing site. And, and after that, the county would reimburse them for their CDL physical update after that fact. And it could two years, which is, yeah, some over one year, some in between, and well, and they have medication, so. So if anything, we already paid all the help guys when they reimburse the fifty-five dollars for physical. And that's what these new guys would have to do after they got all the initial first, so.
And the CDL guy makes, he'll get paid for us for having CDLs at home.
Oh, right now? Right now, every one of them started in nineteen fifteen hour, I can't give you about that.
Yeah.
After they pass and they get their license, it will be bumped up to the middle, tractor I perceive at twenty dollars and forty cents.
Does it look like the group's staying, or we just train them?
I think so.
I mean, I did, that's what I'm worried about, we trained them, and they.
Well, I think.
I might have tested.
Yeah.
Well, one of the guys was very personal to hire, and I really feel he's going to stick around. Another guy I hired that had thirty-five years, basically, I'll pass it, and he's a little bit older, I don't think he's going to go anywhere. Another guy came from one of his local factories, working seven days a week, and ready for change, just had more time with his family, green kids. And I don't really think he's going to go anywhere, so.
Okay, I just want to, they, how much, they really don't have a lot invested themselves.
No, no.
Couple hundred bucks is about all I got, the best.
That's correct.
That's what I worry about, I was trying to go, go somewhere else.
Well, I mean, I think that's where I've been, Kevin.
Something up in glow or something.
In town, yeah, glow, uh. Yeah, so I've been thinking that, everybody, glow. So far, I'm just getting that selective on who I was hired. Yeah.
That's, I mean, I just, hey, press turned into training center.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
You what? You gotta put things hard, get it on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not being the highway part, but you.
Thanks, sir, but it's working out, right, yeah.
Is that, do you have any, I mean, does that give you a full staff in?
Well, that's for later discussion, okay.
Anyone else have anything else? Wait, can you just beg, Brian? Are you in North Bay, Brian? I will say this, um, our deputy wants to meet with the council. For three of us at the time, I don't see anybody that is our deputy, he's a slower, on time company. He wants to go with us, he called me about that, hello, Brian, you, I'm just trying to be open about what's going on.
That's up to you guys.
He's supposed to get back with me today and listen, if he's, if we can, three of us at a time, sometime next week. You want to sit down and talk to him, that's fine, if you don't, that's fine, either way you want to do it, so, I'll try to get that information out. Imagine, Brian, I hope you're included.
Yeah.
I, I would like for you to be included, we may meet it, I asked to meet at your facility, but.
Sure, that's fine, uh, it's. Uh, if you see, it's kind of, they. It's protected. So, it's the, there's something. You, you have, I'll share with you guys soon, do, fight, have some numbers a lot to.
Yeah.
So. Just, you assess all projects.
If it's okay with him, like, if we can meet at your place, and have you included, I'd really like to have you included. You've been kind of the lead guy on this thing. Anybody else want to adjourn?
Second.
Bill seconds. All those in favor, any opposed to that?